Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 13, 2020, City of Salisbury City Council Legislative Session. At this time, I would ask everyone to please silence any electronic devices that make noise. If an emergency should arise during the meeting, we ask that you leave in an orderly manner, make a right-hand turn and go down the stairs. If that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn, the right-hand turn, and then go down those stairs. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask, and it will be provided to you. At this time, I'll call on Reverend Norman Hancock of St. Thomas Angleton Church for our invocation. Reverend Hancock.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Do I have about a half hour to do this?
Take all the time you can. It's important.
Very much so. Shall we bow our heads in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and for the measure of health we need to fulfill each of our callings, for sustenance and for friendship, and we thank you for those willing to serve publicly as well as those behind the scenes on behalf of our Salisbury community. We come to you this evening asking on behalf of those who serve for your guidance, wisdom, and support tonight and in the year ahead. May the mayor, city council, and all city officials' efforts be blessed with insight and guided by understanding and wisdom, and may we all serve with respect for all. We also lift up to you this evening for protection of all those who are in harm's way, our police, our firemen, MTs, and correctional officers. And for the year ahead, we pray for budgets to be met, scheduled completion of projects to be on time, and the proposal of creative ways that will make our city a more safe, comfortable, and pleasing place to live, visit, work, shop, and fellowship. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us, and we ask all these things in your name.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Hancock. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We'll give this to Ms. Jackson and seconded by Ms. Blake. Thank you. Will those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Gregory. Good evening, Mrs. Carter. How are you?
I'm good. How are you this evening?
Very good, thank you.
I'm here to bring you the consent agenda this evening, which consists of the December 2, 2019 closed session minutes, the December 2, 2019 work session minutes, December 9, 2019 legislative session minutes, December 16, 2019 special meeting minutes, December 16, 2019 work session minutes, January 6, 2020 closed session minutes, January 6, 2020 work session minutes, Resolution Number 2985 to amend the disclaimer in Chapter 3 of the employee handbook to update the employee handbook, Resolution Number 2986 approving the reappointment of Brian Soper to the Board of Zoning Appeals for term ending December 2022, Resolution Number 2987 accepting the donation of free library stands from Sean Fahey of Peninsula Roofing Company for the City of Salisbury in support of a free city library project, approving the manufacturing exemption request for Spartech LLC, and approving the manufacturing exemption request for LWRC International LLC, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Is Brian Soper here? No. Okay. I'd also like to publicly thank Sean Fahey for his generous donation. It's a fantastic thing that is happening for our youth in the neighborhoods.
And that was eight of those, right?
Eight. Yeah, we're going to have eight free library stands located throughout the city. I know one's going on Truitt Street, and the others will be placed around the city, which is fantastic. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake.
Mrs. Miller, good evening.
Good evening. Four items this evening on award of bids. First item this evening is award of bid for invitation to bid number ITB 20-112, Zephalio Well Number 3 Construction. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to solicit bids for qualified and experienced contractors to furnish all labor, material, and equipment necessary to construct a new production well and raw water main for connection to the existing raw water main located along Naylor Mill Road. The City of Salisbury followed standard bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times, posting the solicitation on the City of Salisbury's procurement portal, and advertising on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. Two vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of December 4, 2019 at 2:30 p.m., with Chesapeake Turf LLC submitting the lowest responsive and responsible bid. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award this contract to Chesapeake Turf in the amount of $2,437,899.60. Funding is available in the account noted in your memo.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Next item this evening is award of bid for contract number ITB A-20-106 Liquid Magnesium Hydroxide. The City of Salisbury Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Waterworks to solicit bids for contract ITB A-20-106 Liquid Magnesium Hydroxide. This solicitation sought bids from qualified and experienced firms to furnish and deliver liquid magnesium hydroxide to the wastewater treatment plant at 1142 Marine Road. This award will constitute a requirements contract. While the city has attempted to identify the estimated amount of liquid magnesium hydroxide to cover its processing requirements, the quantity of chemical ordered may be different than that submitted for bidding. No minimum purchase was implied or guaranteed. Thereby, the city reserves the right to increase or decrease the quantity acknowledged in the solicitation document, and these modifications do not constitute a change order. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew this contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriation and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the City of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. One vendor submitted a bid by the due date and time of December 16, 2019 at 2:30 p.m., and that was a bid by Premier Magnesia LLC for $2.69 a gallon. Premier Magnesia was deemed responsive and responsible, and the Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award this contract to the vendor, with said annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. Supply orders will be issued by the wastewater treatment plant as needed from the account noted in your packet.
Any questions or comments? I'll just ask a quick question. 344-320, is that within what we did last year? Do you know?
Yeah, our total chemical budget, that's just one part of the chemical budget. The total chemical budget for FY '20 is $1.375 million.
Okay. There's no other questions?
Okay. The next item is an award of bid for ITB A-20-1005. It's a citywide electrical services contract. The Department of Procurement solicited bids for all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for the routine maintenance, emergency repair, and minor upgrades to the electrical systems supporting city facilities. In the last three calendar years, including 2019 year-to-date, the city has expended approximately $106,000 on miscellaneous electrical services under the previous contract. This award will constitute an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract. The services provided to the city will be of an on-call nature with no minimum purchase implied or guaranteed. Additionally, the solicitation included a contract extension clause. This provides the city with the option to renew all or portions of this contract with the same terms and conditions as the original contract for up to two one-year terms contingent upon sufficient budget appropriations and mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The Department of Procurement followed standard competitive bidding practices by advertising in the Daily Times and posting the solicitation on both the city's website and on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. The attached bid tab shows pricing from three vendors that submitted bids by the due date and time of November 27, 2019 at 2:30 p.m. Two vendors were deemed responsive and responsible, and the Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval to award contract ITB A-20-105 to Carter's Electrical Services Incorporated, with subsequent annual renewals processed by the Department of Procurement. Purchase orders for specific tasks will be issued as needed by the department requesting contract services.
Any questions or comments?
Okay. All right. Last item. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number one in the amount of $11,851.33 for invitation to bid 19-124 Town Square Phase 1. This change order is the net result of deductions and additions to the scope of work, commonly referred to as a balancing change order. Funds are available in the Streetscaping Project account noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to process change order number one, as noted, to Barker's Landing Excavation LLC.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, and I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2988.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Kittrick.
Resolution Number 2988, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorizing the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for the development of 144 East Main Street, whereas First Move Properties LLC has requested a waiver of the capacity fee for the development of 144 East Main Street, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits and the central business district, and whereas the city seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in the central business district, and whereas the city seeks to reduce capacity fees for eligible development and redevelopment in the central business district by means of an equivalent dwelling unit, EDU incentive area, and whereas the proposed development of 144 East Main Street requires a total of 35 equivalent dwelling units of water and sewer services, and whereas the current capacity fee for one equivalent dwelling unit is $3,533, and whereas the capacity fee for 35 equivalent dwelling units is $123,655, and whereas the city council approved a capacity fee waiver process under ordinance number 2258 for development in the central business district, and whereas the Director of Infrastructure and Development reviewed the request and has determined that the project is eligible for the capacity fee waiver, and whereas the mayor reviewed the request and supports sending the request to the city council, and whereas, if approved, the EDU allocation for the capacity fee waiver is valid for two years from the time of the signing of this resolution, and whereas the property owner has the option to request an extension of the allocation for two one-year terms if approved in writing by the Director of Infrastructure and Development prior to the expiration of the term, and whereas the allocated EDUs are assigned to the development of 144 East Main Street and cannot be transferred by the recipient. Now therefore be it resolved that the city, the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland approves the waiver of 35 equivalent dwelling units of the capacity fee for the development of 144 East Main Street by First Move Properties LLC.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2988, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2989.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Resolution Number 2989, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with First Move Properties LLC to allow the use of soil located at the city's wastewater treatment plant for the redevelopment of 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, and 144 East Main Street, whereas the city seeks to encourage development and redevelopment in the central business district, the riverfront redevelopment area in the enterprise zone, and whereas 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, and 144 East Main Street are located in the central business district, and whereas the purpose of this agreement is to share resources to assist in the development of these parcels, and whereas the city has excess soil stockpiled at the wastewater treatment plant, and whereas the city desires to enter into the attached memorandum of understanding to specify the requirements for the owner developer to have access to the city's stockpiled soil. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland that the mayor is authorized to sign and enter into the attached memorandum of understanding with First Move Properties LLC.
Any questions or comments? Excuse me. I'll call the motion, and all those in favor to approve Resolution Number 2989, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2990.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson.
Resolution Number 2990, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with First Move Properties LLC for the purchase of parking permits in the downtown parking garage, whereas First Move Properties LLC intends to improve properties and its, it owns located at three, excuse me, at 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, and 144 East Main Street in the central business district, and whereas the attached developers agreement details the agreement between the City of Salisbury and First Move Properties regarding parking spaces in the garage. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland that the mayor is authorized to negotiate, sign, and enter into an agreement with First Move Properties LLC that is substantially similar to the attached developers agreement with such other terms and conditions as may be required by the city solicitor. Now, there's a few changes to the original that I'd like to note out right now.
We'll entertain a motion to amend.
Got it.
I'll entertain a motion to amend.
So moved. So moved.
Ms. Blake.
Oh, I thought the person with second had to read it.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, mirror.
You did have a second?
Mirror, Mr. Boda, okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Boda.
All right. All right. So on this motion, we'd like to, on line six, strike to grant a temporary construction easement and perpetual maintenance easement and to grant a deed of easement to First Move Properties LLC. On line 16, strike whereas First Move Properties LLC requires easements across real property owned by the City of Salisbury in order to improve the properties identified as 130 East Main Street, 132 East Main Street, City of Salisbury, to create a walkway from the property to the City of Salisbury parking garage, and, and then on line 21, strike whereas the attached deed of easement and the attached temporary construction easement and perpetual maintenance easement detail, the aforementioned easement areas in agreement between the City of Salisbury and First Move Properties LLC. On line 27, strike and easements, and strike are, and insert is before substantially. On line 28, strike temporary construction and perpetual maintenance easement and deed of easement, and then the last one on line 29, insert may be before the word required.
All right, we have a motion in a second for the amendment as read by Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. The vote was five zero. Now that we've, we will now call the motion on the amendment as amended. I'll entertain a vote for Resolution Number 2990. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. That vote is five zero. Thank you, Mr. Kittrick. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2570 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory. Evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY '20 budget to appropriate developer contribution for pedestrian improvements, whereas the Salisbury Wycomico Planning and Zoning Commission has approved the Coventry Plaza Shopping Center with the condition of pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Beaglin Park Drive and Still Meadow Boulevard, and whereas Coventry Plaza LLC is the developer of the Coventry Plaza Shopping Center and will provide a contribution to the City of Salisbury for the pedestrian improvements, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development has determined that the cost of the pedestrian improvements is $27,200, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget is hereby amended as follows. Increase the developer reimbursements by $27,200 and increase the engineering and construction budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2570 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is five zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2571 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the roof replacement and fire station one project, whereas ordinance number 2482 appropriated funds for the FY '20 19 budget, and whereas included in Schedule B in ordinance 2423 was an appropriation for the roof replacement of fire station one, and whereas the ordinance number 2554 appropriated funds for the roof replacement fire station number one in the amount of $50,000, and whereas unforeseen roof conditions have caused this project to exceed the initial budget cost by $1,431, and whereas in the same bond, there are funds from other projects available to be reallocated, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that the city's capital project fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. And the chart there indicates that you're taking $1,431 from the phone system fire department and adding that into roof replacement fire station one, and that on the expenditure side, the same transfer is being made.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2571 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is five zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2572 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY '20 general fund to appropriate an additional position allocation for the hiring of volunteer recruitment coordinator for the fire department, whereas the fire department has need to hire a volunteer recruitment coordinator who will be essential to the continued success of the volunteer component of the department, and whereas this position will assist in the developing, leading, and implementing of a comprehensive recruitment and retention program, and whereas the volunteer corporations are strongly committed to the creation and implementation of this new created position and are proposing a partnership that builds on the longstanding cooperative team effort that already exists with the city, and whereas there are sufficient funds available in the FY '20 fire department budget to fund the additional position, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fire department position allocations be amended. Number one, adding one volunteer recruitment coordinator civilian. That's it.
Any questions or comments? I just have one comment that, just for those who have not been involved before, what we've, what we're doing is the first year of this additional personnel is being paid for by the volunteer group, correct? And then it will, we'll eventually pick up the whole tab, but it's staggered over a three-year period, I believe?
Yes. Actually, a four-year.
Four-year, four-year period. My error. All right, hearing, there are no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2572 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2573 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY '20-20 general fund budget to appropriate funds for the purpose of self-contained breathing apparatus, whereas the firefighters are extremely vulnerable to injury and death from fighting structure fires or working in hazardous environments, and whereas the fire department's current SCBA has reached its end of serviceable life in accordance with the National Fire Protection Association 1981 standard in open-circuit self-contained breathing apparatus for the emergency services in the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, Section 42 CFR, Section 84 Respiratory Productive Devices, and whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department desires to remain compliant with the generally accepted industry standards and protect its firefighting personnel from the elements of danger associated with the interior firefighting by ensuring their personnel protective equipment is maintained at the highest standard, and whereas the fire department has the need to replace 90 sets of SCBA and 104 additional personal face masks, and whereas the SCBA replacement cost is $740,000, and whereas the FY '20-20 fire department budget does not contain an appropriation sufficient to cover the required expenses, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2020 budget be amended as follows. Increase the current year surplus by $740,000. Paragraph two, increase the fire department's expense equipment account by $740,000.
Questions or comments? Just a note again for the general public who may not have been here for the first or with us for the first reading. Normally, first of all, this happens every 15 years, and in the past, we have applied for and received a grant to pay for this, all the C. for and received a grant to pay for this, all the SCBA. We did not get the grant this year. Therefore, we had to adjust the budget accordingly. So that's the reason for the large amount of money. Having said that, I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2573 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is five zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2575 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. Mr. Tillman.
Yes, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving budget amendment of the city's special revenue fund budget and to accept and appropriate funds from the Bless Our Children campaign for the Santa's Workshop Program, whereas the City of Salisbury's Housing Committee Development Department hosts the Santa's Workshop Program every year, and whereas Bless Our Children wishes to donate funds to help sponsor this annual program, and whereas the donation of funds we use to purchase gifts, refreshments, and equipment used to run the program, and whereas these donations are to be used for the general public welfare by purchasing toys to provide to needy children, and whereas appropriations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained, that the City of Salisbury, Maryland, does hereby accept the donation of funds of $2,000 from Bless Our Children for the Santa's Workshop Program, and be it further ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, that the city's special revenue fund be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase in the contribution revenue by 2,000 and increase in the operating expense by 2,000.
Any questions or comments?
I do have a comment. I was there for the Santa's Workshop, and it was such marvelous, marvelous. I really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed, and I know the kids did, because they got gifts that normally they wouldn't have gotten at all. So, you know, I really appreciate the donation from Bless Our Children, and I really appreciate the City of Salisbury for thinking about robbery to help our community. And that's it.
I second that comment as well. If I remember correctly, Mr. Howard, 300?
That was 200.
200? How many families?
230.
Kids.
230 kids.
300.
And 300, 350 people. It's amazing. And my thanks go out to WPOC, Draper Holding Company, for their donation to aid in us being able to do that. All right. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2575 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2576 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the projects authorized to be funded by reallocations in 2020 budget ordinance, Schedule B, whereas the FY '20 '20 budget ordinance, Schedule B, included an appropriation for capital projects shown in Exhibit A in the amount of $904,190 by reallocating bond proceeds, and whereas the city's Department of Infrastructure and Development has determined that $116,000 in lawsuit proceeds previously allocated to the Hampshire Road Lift Station project, and $48,000 in the FY bond proceeds previously allocated to the belt filter press project are available for reallocation, and whereas $100,000 in interest accrued on the lawsuit proceeds for the wastewater treatment plant lawsuit and is available for allocation, and whereas projects listed in Schedule B are to become allocated funds by this ordinance, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. And do you want me to go down that chart or not? Basically, it just shows what projects it's coming from as described above and where it's going.
I think we're fine. That was presented in the work session, so. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2576 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Carter, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
At this time, we will go into closed session to discuss advice, to obtain advice on legal matters. So I'll entertain a motion to convene in closed session.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session. Thank you very much.